Good morning. I call to order the regular meeting of the Oak Island Planning Board for November 17th, If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is adjustment or approval of our agenda. Does anybody have anything to change? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. David, second. Carrie, all in favor? It is unanimous. I will mention that Natasha Tatum and Tim Pittman are not here. We do have a quorum of five members. I did get a text from Natasha last night saying that she might not be able to make it this morning. We will carry on. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have our minutes from our September 15th regular meeting and our August 12th, October 12th, sorry, audit meeting. Does anybody have any corrections to make to the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for these two meetings as presented?
So moved.
Carrie, second.
Second.
Bob, all in favor? It is unanimous. All right. Since there was nobody in the room but us, we have no public comment. And so we'll move right along to old business. Matt, take it away.
Good morning, everyone. Apologize if I'm a little sluggish. My doctor told me to stop drinking caffeine in coffee, so bear with me. It's day number two, so we're doing all right.
You're very brave, Matt.
First item on your agenda for today is a proposed zoning map amendment. This is the result of a couple of months of discussion that the board has had about some town-owned properties. Staff is, to the best of our ability, gathered up everything that we had a consensus on and got it in front of you should you want to go ahead and make a recommendation for a zoning map amendment to town council. So I won't belabor it too much since we've kind of worked through some of these issues before. This kind of began at the August Planning Board meeting to review town-owned properties, look at the environmental impacts. You reviewed four groups of properties in the September meeting and then additional three groups at the October meeting, and the board consensus at the time was to consider a zoning map amendment. So I'll run through these groups. There was some consensus on what to do with them on. First is a group of parcels on the very west end of the beach. This is commonly known as the Point. So they're currently zoned R7. The next is a group of parcels at the intersection of Oak Island Drive and Middleton. These are the ones, just for your reference, the ones that are highlighted in red are the parcels that would be forwarded should the board take action. And if the board wanted to consider a different grouping of parcels or something like that, more than welcome to. And then this is the properties near the Rec Center, kind of from 29th Street to 32nd. Several town-owned parcels there. One little piece off of Country Club Drive, Yopon, near that intersection, near the intercoastal The last grouping, there wasn't a clear consensus. There was some discussion about potentially bracketing some out, so I would leave that up to the board in this discussion if they wanted to forward all four or, you know, some mix of the two. But what you've got in front of you would be for all four, so you'd need to kind of tweak what staff has presented to you if you wanted to remove some of those or consider some different grouping of parcels. So should the board want to go ahead and take action on these parcels, we've included a motion that's on your screen and in your agenda packet. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have, but as I said, we've had some extensive discussion about this, so hopefully it's all fresh in your minds. I'm here if you need anything.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Well presented. I appreciate the summary and the maps showing the parcels. We still have all the other maps showing the environmental from our discussions previously. So I'll just open up the floor. We can go down the row and see if y'all have anything you want to add to that. David?
I'm good with it.
Good with it? Carrie?
Good for me.
Carrie?
I have one question on the third group of properties, which is the area from 29th to 31st behind the Rec Center. Did we end up including all the town parcels or did we actually drop one of those out?
We dropped one in.
Okay.
The notes that I had from the town clerk had a few of them being dropped out, so I tried to match that to what the consensus was.
Yeah. Yeah, this does show. I went back and double-checked from the notes that I had, and this reflects what our consensus was at the time.
Okay.
The clerk just has one request going forward. If we talk about both of the properties like this, can we use parcel numbers?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, but anyway, yeah, because we weren't using parcel numbers before. I had put them on my notes, but yeah, this reflects what we, the consensus of what we move forward with. Bob?
I'm going to, my comments are that we should not approve this. Real economic information is not available. It's been somewhat avoided. Real estate people, we have two on the board here that could give us a quick five-minute estimate of the property values and potential uses. You know, leaving out gap, the size of gap in the information and the analysis is not town planning, and I recommend we vote no because the justification, the analysis of the potential use of this property, the value of the property to the taxpayers, it's sort of a random planning act. I would recommend we vote no.
Thank you, Bob.
Is there a motion?
So if maybe, Bob, we can discuss that. So is your objection to just some of these pieces relative to economic value or?
At this point, as a package, I would vote no. I think we started this effort as, look, when Chairman, Madam Chairman brought up a couple of parking, excuse me, a couple of parcels behind the Rec Center. It seemed to make sense because of the Rec Center and the nature of those lots being open space. As much as I would vote in favor of making open space, this is a random pick and choose and make a list and then give up the value of the land and call it open space until somebody decides, let's change it and let's put a house on it or put some business on it. It's just a non-comprehensive or random assembly of properties and label them open space without much planning or rationale behind them. The rationale has been they've been open space for a while. Let's call them open space. They're right next to other open space lots, but we're not going to talk about those. And we've got some properties that would be, I would think, perfect for houses or even, you know, the gateway to our city over on Middleton and Oak Island Drive. I haven't seen anybody or heard anybody say, we've done a study, even not exhaustive, but we've done some study and we can't find a decent use for this other than open space or that open space is the decent use.
And Bob, I respectfully disagree with some of the things that you have said in terms of the, you know, we have looked at the properties that the town does own that are vacant. Matt has given us an environmental analysis of each on several levels. And open space does have an economic value.
It was my understanding that what we requested as a board from Matt was a list of town-owned properties with environmental implications or perhaps something we should look at from a protective basis was my understanding of why we went through this exercise.
Yes.
So I don't, to Madam Chair's point, I don't think it was random necessarily or unplanned or unorganized, Bob. With all due respect, I think what we were trying to do with this was do some environmental protections relative to these particular tracts or parcels as a group. Lisa, sorry, there's too many to name.
No, that's fine.
So I understand where you're coming from, but I don't see it as random or unorganized in our approach here.
Madam Chair, I have one question for Matt, if I may. Last meeting, we talked about what the town manager might have in mind. Were you able to get any additional information about his thinking in terms of the parcels he wanted to sell?
Oh, the only ones that we had recommended previously were the ones on McLaMry and Elizabeth, I believe. My understanding is that the town council intends to review essentially all of town-owned property, so certainly that could be a portion of that review, and this board's recommendation could weigh in on something like that.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could respond. I think member Carrie suggested that the selection of these properties were parcels that were at environmental risk of some sort. That's not what I was told twice in two meetings. I tried to get that clear. We had one meeting, we were told, these are the lots that the town owns that we didn't have a plan for. Then it was, well, there was two lots that were supposedly planning to be sold, but then they came into the fold. And so the criteria for selecting these properties, I understood, was the town owned them. Some of them are on environmental issues, definitely, but there's no question about it, and some of them should probably be open space. But the selection criteria for these properties were the town owns them, so there's a value to the town. And ordinarily, you'd have a real estate person, I don't think we need to actually get full appraisals on these, but you'd have a real estate person that would, it may be a couple to have two different opinions, just to do a five-minute assessment on every property as to the viability and the, but we're going to take them off the tax rolls, all of them.
They're already off the tax rolls, Bob, but I would say in terms of real estate appraisals, and town council has indicated in comments during their meetings in recent months, particularly the one where they've had consideration of the Elizabeth five properties, or what is our group five, I suppose, that last group, that there have been previous and there have been several over the years, previous looks at all of the town-owned property. And realtors were asked to do that very thing. I think that is most appropriate at a council level if they choose to do so before taking any action on what we may send them.
So Madam Chair, if I may, to Matt, so had these tracts or parcels that were provided to us to look at, I was presuming the town had already decided or evaluated whether or not there was some reason they should be sold or otherwise evaluated for value. In other words, you wouldn't have given us parcels or tracts that the town had other plans for, is I guess my question.
Your first review, the very first review in those four groups, that's correct. At the second review, you asked for some additional parcels. You know, we talked about 46th Street, there may be some parking. We talked about Elizabeth and McLaMry, where there may be some properties being sold. So we brought those back to you at your request, as the planning board, to review the same environmental impacts that we had in the first round. But that first, those first four groups are the ones, that's correct, where we had looked at them and said that we don't have any future plans for these parcels.
So to summarize, the town had already determined that they did not want to sell or otherwise raise revenue off these parcels. Would that be a correct statement?
To my knowledge, that's correct.
And to my knowledge of past history, that's a correct statement as well.
Okay. Just to clarify.
Going back.
And some of those, like the Point, we can't. It's kind of a simple one. There's a deed restriction on those properties, so we couldn't do anything with those even if we wanted to.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think some of the parcels that we ended up adding in the additional groups are areas that are environmentally sensitive or are areas that should be preserved. And I think we looked at that, so I think that was the reason we actually added additional parcels.
I don't think it's an either or. I think it's an all of the above.
And to also clarify, at any future time, we can go back at any time and reclassify any of these parcels at a different zone.
Plan board can, as you wouldn't right now, if you decide to act, initiate a zoning map amendment, town council can initiate the same zoning map amendment.
So is there a motion?
Any, I guess I would, Madam Chair, for, Bob, is there any further discussion from your side?
No. I've got to belabor it. Thank you all. And whoever reads this motion, please use the one in the agenda packet with all the parcel numbers. I apologize, but it's good for posterity to have it read out loud.
As Chair, I'm not above making a motion. And so I move to initiate the zoning map amendment and recommend town council amend the zoning map for the town-owned parcels, tax ID parcel number 233OB005, 233OB002, 233OB00208, 233OA022 from R7, medium density residential to OS, open space district, tax parcel, tax ID parcel number 234LD012, 234LC014, 234EE001, 234EE049, 234EE048, and 234EE047 from R6 Residential District to OS Open Space District, tax ID parcels number 235NH038, 235NH017, 235NH016, 235NH039, 235NH01501, 235NH001, 235NG021, 235NG022, and 235NG011 from R6 Residential District to OS Open Space District, tax parcel ID number 236MA005 from R20 Low Density Residential District to OS Open Space District, tax ID parcel number 250CG064, 250CG065, 250CG054, and 250CG056 from R9 Medium Density Residential District to OS Open Space District, finding that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, action item I-19, which encourages the town to maintain the zoning of open space areas such as marshes and other environmentally sensitive land, and expand where possible as well as reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed map amendment would protect and preserve environmentally sensitive areas within the town's jurisdiction.
Well done.
And adopt the, let's see, it says that at the end, but adopt the associated consistency statement. That's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Carrie, any further comment? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. Mr. Callahan in the negative. Okay. Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is food trucks. So Matt? Carrie, the what?
Absolutely. This is a continuation of the discussion from last month. The board had some general discussion regarding food trucks, food businesses on the island, and asked staff to draft some potential changes for things we could do regarding food trucks. We've got some of those in here. I'll kind of run through what kind of models you can do to regulate food trucks here within the town. These are explained in your agenda packet, so we'll kind of summarize the findings of them. The first one's kind of a simple tweak around the edges, an incremental change, some strategies the board could consider in making incremental changes would be reducing or eliminating spacing requirements between brick and mortar businesses and food trucks, considering expanding the hours of operations. It's currently limited to 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Many jurisdictions, you know, either have extended hours or maybe, I actually found one, Wilmington has kind of an interesting setup where they say how many hours the food truck can be on a site, but not necessarily limit the hours. Like you might get three hours and you get to pick whether that's six to nine or five to eight or, you know, however, or lunchtime, however you want to set those up. You could consider expanding or eliminating seasonal operation requirements and increasing the number of permits available per year. I believe currently it's limited at six. The board could also recommend that the permitting requirements for food trucks be further aligned with itinerant merchants. Those are in a separate chapter, but should be in your agenda packet as well for you to review. Some of them are similar. They do have different hours of operation. Obviously, they don't have spacing requirements similar to what a food truck does, but there are a few similarities there. Second thing you could consider doing is a food truck rodeo. We had some discussion about this last month as well, essentially allowing a site to be developed and set up to house multiple food trucks. So you could, there's quite a few things to consider along with that. You have driveway, parking requirements, landscaping, whether there needs to be any spacing between the trucks on the site, between other buildings. You know, typically, we'd establish a building setback, but food trucks are mobile, so, you know, we'd have to consider applying the setback to the actual spots, things like that. A pretty simple tweak that you could do to establish the vast majority of those is just make, if you have a food truck rodeo, make them subject to Article 10. Article 10 is our performance standards in the ordinance. It's what most, well, actually, all commercial development follows for all those things I just talked about, you know, spacing, parking, landscaping, lighting, driveway access, pedestrian access, that's all in Article 10. So if you did decide to advance the concept of a food truck rodeo, a simple statement subjecting them to Article 10 of the UDO would be sufficient to cover most of the concerns that would come out of this type of development. One note to that, Article 10, the parking standards, we obviously don't specifically mention food trucks, but we do have a caveat under there for other uses. So if there's a use that's not in the table for parking, there's another category, and what you have to do there is have a third-party traffic engineer, certified traffic engineer, do a study to determine how many spaces you need and submit that with your plan. I've worked in many jurisdictions that have a similar allowance because you usually can't encompass everything in that type of table, so you want some type of carve-out. And I've actually worked with traffic engineers that engineered that or had that very same type of study done and sealed and certified it that this was the requisite parking. So it's something to consider there. And then finally, the board could consider allowing existing businesses to set up a permanent food truck location, so it'll be subject to all those spacing requirements, all the Article 10 requirements we have. But let's say I own a business and I want a place, I know where I want to have a food truck come. I want to have them come every other week. I know I can set up a spot that meets all these requirements. I could send the site plan to town staff, review it, we make sure it meets all those things. You have the blessing to have a food truck locate there, subject to the regulations that are in the ordinance for whatever this board decides for hours of operation, seasonality, et cetera, or number of spaces as well. We see this a lot in jurisdictions that have a lot of breweries, you know, bars, things like that. They have a spot where, hey, we know we're going to have a food truck come by on Friday night. We want to have a space for it, so we're going to design our site in a way that has a space for it, and that's going to be the use of it. Just a few things to require, really, and really, none of these three changes would require, you know, lengthy ordinance change, the incrementals, you can just change a couple of spaces in the ordinance, adding the food trucks to existing businesses or a food truck rodeo could simply be added to that food truck ordinance as it is right now, you know, with those statements that I mentioned, that it's subject to the, all the standards that are in that subsection as well as Article 10. You have kind of three drafts in your agenda packet as well as a potential motion should you want to make those changes. I would recommend that if the board does want to do all of them or wants to do some variation of what staff has proposed, and you want to go ahead and initiate a tax amendment and make that motion be clear in the motion that, you know, we want to change these things as well. But we did take a look at the comprehensive plan. Not really anything very specific regarding food trucks. We did have a couple of action items that could be related. One that, action item I-20 deals with the development of the UDO and recommends that the town develop food truck regulations, which that's arguably done, but it's not always a bad idea to go back and take a second look at them after they've been implemented to determine if they're working well for you or not. In addition, it would ask the town to consider a town center with a mix of uses, including residential, retail, restaurants, entertainment, et cetera. Certainly adding a food truck component to existing businesses can increase that mix and increases, you know, the vibrancy, the amount of people that are found in those districts as they come, not only to visit the food truck, but also the business that's associated with it. So there's a little bit of a connection there. In addition, because staff does feel that any of these tax amendments could be considered reasonable in the public interest because they maintain those safety and access requirements that we already have in the ordinance, but it can expand opportunities for businesses and public service. I don't know why that 23 is in there. It's a typo. I apologize for that. But I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. We did look at a couple other jurisdictions ordinances. Southport, Wilmington were two that had pretty clear ordinance standards. I will say that our spacing requirement is by far, even at 100, is higher than most other jurisdictions. So even if the board were to consider lowering that, you know, 500 that we have right now is, you know, way above anywhere else, and even 100 would still put us at higher than most other local jurisdictions, so it's something to consider. And another thing that we found is most do have a one-year period for the validity of a food truck permit, and I wasn't able to find any other jurisdictions that had a cap on the number of permits that could be issued within that year. So a permit is good for a year. What we have in the draft for those incremental changes would simply align the number of permits with the number of permits we have for itinerant merchants. We have 10 a year currently, so 10 seemed like a reasonable number to at least start off with, but the board could obviously change that if it feels like it's a good idea.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Excuse me. Carrie, since you brought this to us to begin with, I'd like to hear what you have to, what you think about it.
Sure. I mean, my, my thought on this was really just to address the concerns that had come up from the community and food truck vendors, just about really the permitting process, the, the hours they could operate, where they could operate. So I think that the, in my, the incremental changes to the, to the ordinance that we have now seem reasonable to me, and I like what you have here. I guess the only thing, I think some combination of allowing a stipulation for adding some agreement of existing businesses that could partner with a food truck within just this incremental changes draft section would kind of merge the first and last suggestions that you had, right, for, you know, for food trucks to partner with an existing commercial business. If some language could be added here, just that that by agreement is allowed, to me, this, this, the incremental changes draft seemed very reasonable to me, and really attacked what concerns I had heard from the community.
And, you know, this, this board doesn't have to adopt one, or, you know, you could do both. So if you, if you think as a group that the incremental changes and the allowance for a permanent business, you could recommend both of those changes with your text amendment. It certainly seems reasonable, in my opinion, to allow a business to design their site in a way that would allow a permanent space for a food truck if it so, so chose.
Chair, I have a question for Matt. I think last month, we talked about, most food trucks seem to be operating under
They're all operating.
itinerant merchant
Yes.
permits. I guess my question is, is why does the town, why does the town issue that kind of permit versus a food truck permit? And if we make this incremental adjustment, does that make it more likely that these permits will be issued as food truck permits?
In my opinion, yes. The food truck, the food trucks that are operating under an itinerant merchant permit, my understanding of them when I came into the town, there was a couple of them already operating under that type of permit. The intention was, itinerant merchants are intended to set up on a site and occupy that site for retail uses. We have a different provision for peddlers, which is what you see with the more of a push cart. Those are ones that move every couple of hours, or are intended to move every couple of hours. From my understanding, the, the intention of those was to have a place for those businesses to set up, especially where they already partner with a, a local business, or are a part of a local business. They may not neatly fall into that existing food truck category or regulation. So that was an instance where the staff was asked to make a determination for kind of the, the next closest thing in the ordinance, because it didn't neatly fall under that. In my opinion, you know, these, these tweaks around the edges for the incremental changes, and especially the one to allow existing businesses to set up a site for food trucks to operate, would certainly allow these businesses that have kind of been, not necessarily forced, but by the ordinance, you know, fallen under a separate category, to fall under the food truck category, which I think is the intent of the ordinance. So I, I do think it gets us closer to that, and I think it will be much smoother sailing for those people going forward if we can clear some of these things up and make these allowances that people are using under a different permit type. It will fall under the permit type that it should be. Because the, the flip side of that, too, is we're only allowed 10 itinerant merchant permits every year, and if I've got three people that are selling food, that are using up those itinerant merchant permits, well, I can't, I can't make three more up here in the ordinance. So it makes sense to, to get these folks into the right categories. The, still kind of interesting question Mr. Callahan brought up last month when we discussed this, is like, if you're selling, you know, fruit, or if you're selling pre-made food, or if you're, you know, things of that nature, in my opinion, those probably should fall under itinerant merchants if you're not cooking the food on-site. But then the peddlers are, there's a stipulation that you can't remain on-site for more than two hours, so those are intended to be mobile, you know, going down the beach, selling Italian ice, that kind of thing, versus, you know, the itinerant merchant, which is intended to set up essentially for a day, maybe a weekend, or something like that, and, and operate on a site.
Thank you. I appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, Terry, you, you brought up my, my central question is, and that is, how can we distinguish between the itinerant merchant and food truck? I think the way the itinerant merchant piece of the general ordinance is worded, you put this about anything in there.
Yeah.
And, and so I would, I would be looking at, and that's probably a change that would be made to that ordinance, which we're not addressing. So
That's right.
our recommendation to council would, could include revising the itinerant merchant ordinance to exclude food trucks
Right.
and align some of these other things with it, potentially.
That's correct, but this board couldn't initiate that text amendment because it's not in the, the UDO. So that, that chapter that deals with those business licenses is outskies the scope of this board. But you can make a general comment.
We can make a general comment to that effect, yeah. It's just not, if, if council asks us to look at that, that'd be another thing.
That's right.
But in terms of initiating, that's
That's right.
not in our purview when we're, of course, we did do some tweaks to the itinerant merchant ordinance two years ago, but
And, and a lot of the food trucks that we see
Trying to be more precise now.
right now operate, are operating in conjunction with an existing business. So they're, you know, setting up where maybe they have a restaurant, or, or a business that they're partnered with, or a business that they're a part of, and they're seeking that itinerant merchant permit because they don't cleanly fall under the food truck regulations as it is right now.
But if we had the, the piece with the existing business, we added that, then that would provide for that.
Should take care of.
That would take care of that piece.
We could add the 7.43.8
Yeah, see, I mean, we could
Ordinance to the, the current
Right. I mean, the, the amendment's on page 28, the amendment on page 31 for the food rodeo, and the, I guess we have to number it differently if we did the permanent truck.
If you wanted to do all three, you wouldn't
If you wanted to do all three, but we could do all three. If we, if we want to send all of it forward to council at one time, which
That would make more sense.
strikes me as
That would be the thing to do.
The thing to do.
Okay.
Yeah. Bob, did you have any?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate going last because you guys just asked a bunch of the questions that I had. But, you know, let's take one thing at a time, just so we could sort of see if we agree. We think that the food trucks, the food truck zoning restrictions should govern food trucks, and that food trucks, I use the same word, must be the same thing. Food trucks should not be allowed to get itinerant merchant licenses and then be food trucks. Maybe if they sell little plastic dolls, I'll decide, they need an itinerant permit license anyway, but they still need a food truck. And so I think like you, the zoning administrator, when somebody comes in to run a food truck, they should have to apply for a food truck license and not a food truck zoning approval, and not be allowed to get an itinerant merchant, because that'd be like saying, I want to build in a commercial district, but I'm not in the commercial district. No, the zoning guy takes over and says, I'm the zoning administrator, and you're not zoned for that. So I think we need to make the distinction that you can't be an itinerant merchant if you're selling food. The other thing is, we did this before. We made some changes to the, the truck, food truck, and we should always be open to make changes, and these, these sound like good changes. But the old food truck license allowed food trucks, the old food truck restrictions allowed food trucks to go to 3:00 in the morning. And that's a different Oak Island, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay? So the, the planning board at that time recommended some other time. I forget what it was, but maybe it was 10:00, it might have been 8:00, and town council restricted it down to 5:00. So, you know, food trucks, so food, so we haven't been able to get anybody to apply for a food truck license since, maybe one in maybe 18 months. I'm just estimating. Any new food trucks become itinerant merchants, because we're allowing them to do that, and they can go past 5:00, and they can start earlier than 9:00. So the itinerant merchant goes from 7:00 AM to 10:00, and that's, we, we typically think that's peddling and, and selling things versus food, meals. So I think we need to just decide that. You can't have people sort of playing both sides of the fence, whichever they pick and choose. I think, I would think that as zoning administrator, you get to decide that it's, a food truck is a food truck, and it needs to fall into the zoning restrictions. We may want to look at allowing them to go past 6:00 at night, because otherwise, you know, I mean, past 5:00 at night, like 6:00 or 6:30 or something. I don't think we want a midnight or 3:00 in the morning time for food trucks, because I think that's a different Oak Island. The other thing is, is we don't, anytime the town seems to have an event, those food trucks fall into a different category. It wouldn't seem like people should be able to show up at our car show, or, or some kind of, you know, farmer's market event without a food truck permit. But I guess somehow that, that's like a loophole as well, and it's been ignored, seems like it's been ignored for a while. I would recommend trying to clean these things up and encouraging food trucks to, to follow the zoning restrictions, which they're avoiding. And one last comment. The, the, there are restaurants all over Oak Island, and, you know, during the off-seasons, they, they get a little thinner. During the season, they, they're overpopulated, but during the off-season, they're probably struggling a bit. And I just wonder if what the restaurant owners would say about food trucks, what would the chamber of commerce say? Have we had any business input, business complaints, or, you know, what, what are they thinking about?
Well, I have a couple of responses to, to what you just said. First, the food truck ordinance specifically exempts food trucks in combination with public events, street closing, special events, et cetera. And that's to allow special food trucks to come to those types of events without having to get a special permit. Or the town would have to apply for a permit for a food truck to come. They come, they get a, they go through public parks and rec, and then they set up for that. Secondly, there's a provision in here to expand the hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM on page 28 of your agenda packet. Staff recommended changing those hours of operation to mirror those of the itinerant merchant. And secondly, the, the seasonality question of it, you know, certainly it's something that the board could do, but it doesn't have to. This is, you know, all things that you can do, not all things that you must do. So if the board feels like they want to wait on the seasonality question, you know, that's perfectly all right with me. But I have to tell a bunch of people who come in for food truck permits that they have to shut down November 30th. So it affects more than just the restaurant business. And to, to that point, you know, I won't get into, you know, whether it's good or bad. The restaurants have advantages that food trucks do not, brick and mortar restaurants. They have air conditioning. They have places for people to sit indoors and get out of the rain that, that a food truck does not necessarily have. So it's not all that the food truck has some type of advantage over the brick and mortar businesses. They're just different business models. So the, the charge of this board and the town council would be to balance and weigh those two interests and determine which one is, is more favorable to them.
One comment on the brick and mortar versus food truck. There's been several studies nationwide. There's been no adverse effect on brick and mortar stores when food trucks are available for service. And I can get those facts and data for you.
Right. And we haven't received any complaints about the food trucks that are operating, and some of them are operating very close to brick and mortar businesses as itinerant merchants.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Bob?
I'm not sure I fully understood what you said with your explanation. We, I guess what you said is, we haven't received any input from the restaurant businesses or the chamber of commerce in a negative fashion against food trucks. No. And I think they are different business models. I, I guess that's kind of obvious. What I was concerned about is, you know, the potential for our businesses that pay taxes here, and that invest in our community, whether they're sponsoring, sponsoring different events and different charities, and, and the concerts and so forth, versus somebody coming in for a, an afternoon to try to skim away some of the preferred business when these other businesses are here year-round. And so, you know, that's what I'm considering, the balance of, of our, I don't want to drive businesses away by any means, or, or take businesses away. But I guess, you know, when this gets advertised, they can come and talk to the, to town council. And I see now the, the change in the hours, and I would, I would worry about that change. I, I, I think we need to think about if we want food trucks till 10:00 at night in Oak Island. And, because I think that's an extension that may be too long, too late at night, and change Oak Island if we had businesses selling food out till 10:00 at night. We need to think about that.
Well, and Bob, the itinerant merchant is 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and that's what they're all operating under now, just to make a point. But the, and I, I wonder if some of the, put it this way, I think most of the food trucks, at least the ones that I'm familiar with, and that doesn't mean I know what they are, I couldn't necessarily list them off to you, but they are owned and operated by people who live here. And, I think that has a difference, you know, just like our, most of our businesses are mom and pop businesses. I mean, they are local mom and pop businesses. It's not somebody who, you know, is in Wilmington and coming down to Oak Island for a couple hours in the summer to, to take that. That's not to say that that couldn't happen in the future. We don't know, but I, I think probably the, the, a lot of the support for, at least the ones that are in business so far, is that, that local mom and pop factor, which is something that we want to preserve and encourage.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
There was one other question I had from Matt. I, I really didn't understand your kind of response. Did you say that you, you can enforce food trucks as I think we know them, to apply for the food truck license and not allow them to become an itinerant merchant, or that they really do have the option of picking and choosing, and you can't call a food truck, a food truck under the UDO?
No, I, I don't think that's the case. I think that there's, the food trucks, the, the food businesses that are currently operating have been determined, and this is a determination that predates me unfortunately, but the fact of the matter is, they've been, the determination has been made by the town that these fall, can fall under an itinerant merchant permit. Now, not all of them would fall under an itinerant merchant permit, but the ones that we have that have operated on the town have been under that type of permit. So I don't think it's the case that anybody can come in that runs a food truck and get an itinerant merchant permit. No.
And hasn't some of the, I'm sorry, Bob, some of the, the requests for permitting into whichever category has been driven by the limited hours for the food truck, that they would have to cut off at 5:00 PM. So therefore, maybe they, they requested an itinerant merchant permit to allow longer hours of operation? Would that be possible?
I, I think what we've seen going, going past has been, as Madam Chair mentioned, these are local businesses that have ties to existing local, usually brick and mortar businesses here on the island. And so viewing that, viewing the, you know, the hours of operation and the seasonality is, you know, those things are advantageous to them. So that, that there's been the determination that those could fall under an itinerant merchant permit. That's right.
And we, we don't tell restaurants what hours they can be open, although
Good point.
staffing certainly limits that in many respects. But yeah, if I want to go out and get something to eat at 4:00 in the morning, I don't have any alternative, unless Food Line or Public's open, or Walmart during season 24 hours, then maybe I might be able to get something to eat. Okay. Sorry. One of the things I did want to, and Bob started with this, but I wanted to remind our, our folks who weren't on the board when we looked at this two years ago. to remind our folks who weren't on the board when we looked at this two years ago, what planning board recommended at that time was having hours from 7:00 to 6:00. I don't remember exactly how we came up with that, but the hours were 7:00 to 6:00 for food trucks. As Bob mentioned, town council changed that to 9:00 to 5:00. And the itinerant merchant even then was 7:00 to 10:00. The number of food trucks, planning board recommended six, council didn't change with that. The itinerant merchant was, I think, changed to 10 at that time. Season, planning board actually recommended calendar year, that it be annual, but it be the entire year. Town council changed that to the March 1st to November 30th to be in line with the itinerant merchant, because that's what the itinerant merchant was. Okay. And then the separation planning were recommended 100 feet. Again, town council changed that to 500 feet or within the same block, which matched the itinerant merchant. So the season and the separation were both changed to be identical to the itinerant merchant, just so you'll understand what happened back then. Not saying that should be now. You know, we could recommend that the food trucks be changed and the itinerant merchants be changed to reflect what we're recommending for the food truck. But the thing that the audit, the couple of statements that the recommendations that are in our UDO audit, which of course, when we looked at those, our last audit meeting, we said, well, we're in progress of, you know, trying to take a look at this, said review food truck and itinerant merchant provisions and reduce conflicting provisions and then confirm continued separation requirement for similar food providers, seasonal time allowance and daily hours of operation. So, you know, that's exactly what we've got here to think through. So we are in fact addressing, now, there are other recommendations about itinerant merchant pieces in the general code, and we're not taking that on until council directs us to as part of the audit process or separately if they so choose to. Because there's a lot of licensing issues and they're trying, you know, we were to put the itinerant merchant in the UDO and then it would be a zoning issue and all those kinds of things, which is what is recommended in the audit. But that's not our purview at this time. And so just wanted to make sure everybody understood where the, some of councils, you know, council basically changed our recommendation to fit the itinerant merchant, which was more restrictive. And I think that still comes from a level of itinerant merchant pre-food truck was, in fact, typically something that did compete with the brick and mortar in a different way than what we've seen in terms of the food business and where those people were coming from and everything else. So there was a great deal of effort put into, remember, the itinerant merchant went through several iterations before it got as detailed and specific. And each time it was to close some loophole that somebody had found in it, couldn't ride down here from February on a Saturday afternoon and scarf other types of business that weren't food related. So I hope that's a little bit helpful.
Madam Chair, if I may, thank you for that background. Helpful, very helpful. But I think a couple of things. I think since this, these ordinances were drafted, I think our community is different. The seasonality of our tourist is different, right? It's a longer season now. Of course, our community has grown. So I think it's reasonable to request these changes. And my thought would be, would it make sense that we just request Matt go back to amend 7.43 as per the incremental changes, adding 7.43.8 for permanent locations as an additional revision and come back to us with that as a proposal? Would that?
We can do that right now.
Would that make sense?
Can we not do that now?
Yeah.
Let's just, let's just go through piece by piece and let's just kind of try to reach
some consensus on what is before us. Okay? So on page 28, 7.4.3.2, that's the separation, part of that is the separation piece. So now it says 500 feet or within the same block. The staff recommendation here is to just set up within 100 feet and strike the same block. Now, that was basically what planning board recommended two years ago. So I'm fine with that. Bob, you good with that?
No.
Okay. You would prefer to leave it as it is?
Right, but we can vote, four to one.
Sure. And 7.43.3, the number has changed from six to 10. Now, six was the one thing that council didn't have the last time. But in terms of, yeah, the first change would, you know, if you wanted to do the itinerant merchant a different way to try and make them, I don't know. I think the original staff recommendation for the numbers was something like a total of 24 and we sliced and diced and had a lot of, total of 24 between the itinerant merchant and the...
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Could we not reduce the itinerant merchant permits to like three, four?
Sure. Or we could suggest that council sends it back to us to do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think the thing would be, you know, we want more food trucks rather than itinerant merchants that aren't food. So, but so, you know, to me, putting the 10 here is not a heartburn thing once you get the itinerant merchant piece squared by. And again, striking the seasonal limitation, the four, one year is what planning board recommended previously. Now, the hours, the planning board had recommended previously seven to six. Council cut it from not to nine to five. The specialty event thing is not a loophole. It's actually provided for. And that's where most of the food trucks are, like, are out anyway. There's some concern, Bob spread some concern with 10 o'clock. Is 10 o'clock too late?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. It's in the summer, it's daylight.
Especially in the summer.
Yeah, it's daylight till 9:00. So, you know, I mean...
And people won't be out there. The food truck won't be there if there's not business, if there're not people coming out. I don't think...
I think they'll, I think they'll self-regulate based on where the...
Also, one comment, most food trucks don't have an ever endless supply of storage space. So when they're out of food or out of product, they're shut down anyhow.
Right. Right.
I'm good with the 10.
And with the hours, the hours?
I'm sorry, I'm good with the 10 p.m.
I'm sorry, I said 10 the other one.
Yeah, I shouldn't have said 10 p.m.
Bob, what would you suggest other than 10?
Well, I think what you're saying is, is we're going to also say that the itinerant merchants should not include the food trucks. Is that, I mean, that's the caveat. Because why would we expand permits when we don't have any in the first place? It's crazy. And you don't have to expand the years and you don't expand the, I mean, the months and you don't expand the timeframe if you don't get any. So the caveat is, is that you want to preempt food trucks. You want to have, I would say, the administrator say that food trucks are not itinerant merchants and that they fall under the UDO requirements. And then this would make some sense. So, but I don't like the hours till 10 o'clock at night. I think 6 o'clock is fine. When we have, when we have the special events, they're exempt and they do a different kind of requirement. So, and I don't really understand why we allow that without them being licensed and permitted, I guess. Why does the recreation allow food trucks that ordinarily wouldn't be allowed? Just doesn't sound like it makes a lot of sense.
Plus it's in the ordinance to allow it.
Right. Exactly. That's fine.
Okay, so consensus for 10 o'clock. And yet, I think we're all looking at caveats in terms of the itinerant merchant needs to be addressed. And perhaps if we, when we send this to council, council will say, okay, we like all this. Now, go ahead and do what, bring us what you need on the itinerant merchant. That may spur that.
For the, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. For the incremental changes, I think we were heading down the road to also add a provision for, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So consensus is okay with the incremental changes on 28. Now, the second piece is the, the next piece on page 31 is the food truck rodeo. And that's where commercial property is vacant. Could theoretically develop just all food trucks on the property with site plan proper, using the performance standards, so forth, subject to that. Now granted, there's not a lot of commercial property in the area that's big enough to do much of anything, but there is some. There are a couple of tracks, blocks. And there might be more places somewhere off Long Beach Road that we're not even thinking about.
I can't think of any.
But, you know, the, yeah, I can think of a couple of parcels that could potentially be. They're still vacant.
And I don't know that we have the requisite business pressure to even support that type of use, but it is something we talked about last time. I was wanting to include the option in there. But I don't have, to everyone's point, six or seven food trucks busting down my door to come have a place to set up. But if the board wants to consider that option, it's in here for you.
And certainly, you know, you've got a, I'm thinking of one block is fairly close by and it's vacant. You know, there might not be 10 trucks on the river, there might be two. This would potentially allow that. And so, must consensus on adding food truck rodeos.
So Madam Chair, would we then need to add 7.43.8.1 and 2?
On 31, we got 7.43.8.
On page 31 and 33?
And 7.43.8.1. And then I would suggest the permanent food truck locations, if we're going to add that, then it'd be 7.43.9. And 7.43.9.1.
Okay.
That makes sense, Matt?
It does, yes. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a question. Do you have to have a food truck permit to be in a food truck rodeo? Or can you go there as an itinerant merchant?
One would think.
Right. So the idea of a food truck rodeo is not too dissimilar from having a permanent spot at a business location where you would develop a site plan, et cetera, to have these locations already set up and the food trucks come and occupy those spaces.
And so, right, you're good with that?
Yeah.
If there's a caveat for it being food trucks rather than...
Well, I don't know. Not really sure what the decision will be in the future.
Okay. And the last thing is the permanent food truck locations. So the example of this scenario would be you might have a, any retail establishment that would have the room to provide for a food truck to always be in there, associated with their business. That retail establishment may or may not be a restaurant. We've certainly seen instances where restaurants that may not have the staffing or the desire to be open all day, they're open at night. So food truck uses that during the daytime. Alternatively, there are some places that are only open for breakfast and lunch. That business might want to open at night, which would be a consideration for the 10:00 p.m. on the hours if you added this piece.
Which I think would be good.
So I'm seeing heads going up and down. Bob, what would your concerns be about the permanent food truck locations on page 33?
I'd want to hear from, I don't see the need. We have, that's competition for our, for our existing businesses. If Chamber of Commerce came in and advocated for it, then that would be a great, that would be a great thing. But I like to protect our existing brick and mortar businesses and have people support those businesses that are supporting the town versus those who come in for a, to maximize their profit at the cost of our existing restaurants. It's one thing during the summer months when our existing restaurants are overfilled, but year round is a different animal. So I don't see the need. I don't, balancing the need is one of the things we're supposed to do. I don't see that need to have somebody just drive in and take advantage of Friday afternoon business when someone else is paying, paying their taxes and supporting the town's activities year round.
Madam Chair, could I, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Chair.
If I understand this correctly, under permanent food truck locations, somebody's not just pulling in and jumping on top of an existing brick and mortar. In this situation, it would actually be the brick and mortar that's approving the food truck for their location.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
That would have to some other plan for the, to the town.
Accommodations.
It's a symbiotic relationship.
Correct.
It's mutual beneficial.
I mean, we have those situations now. There's a restaurant on the island that has that agreement. There's a wine store on the island that has a similar agreement. So we have merchants partnering with food trucks currently. It's happening.
And to a point, you know, if, say, for example, Second Wind is a bar. They don't have any food service to my knowledge. I've never been, but that's just my assumption. That would be an instance where somebody could use this. On the flip side, you know, our idea that we want to protect our local brick and mortar businesses, I can understand the tax revenue portion of that as well. But if somebody wanted to open a, turn Second Wind into a restaurant, we wouldn't say no because there's a restaurant within 500 feet of you. We would say, great, open up a restaurant. You know, not, not say no because there's going to be competition next door. But I certainly understand Mr. Callahan's point, certainly.
Yeah, Second Wind was one of the things I mind, although I've never darkened the doors. It's still, I know people who do that, that they appreciate having a food source close by. Would the, okay, so here's, so if we had the permanent food truck locations, we had the rodeos and we had the sort of other individual food trucks, still the total permits under any of the scenarios would be 10, correct?
That's correct.
So how they, you know, if somebody had two, if somebody had a food rodeo and had two food trucks on that rodeo, then that'd be two per, two out of 10. If you had a, three permanent food trucks in business relationships, that'd be three more. So you got five left to do whatever else. Is that how it would be counted? Okay. Okay. Answer a motion? No, not that motion.
Is that the motion?
That's not the one.
Oh, oh, yeah, the, the motion, Matt, the suggested motion says initiate a zoning map amendment, shouldn't that be a zoning text amendment?
Good, yes. Apologize for that.
Yeah.
That riddled with typos, apparently.
Yeah, so...
Thought that up yesterday, being my first day without coffee, and today is my second.
So, Kerry, since this, you brought this to us, you wanted to read this motion for us.
Sure, sure. I make a motion to initiate the zoning text amendment and recommend town council amend section 7.43 as the planning board hereby finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan action item I-20 and I-109, which encourages the town to develop food truck regulations, as well as consider a town center with a mix of uses, including residential, retail, restaurants, and entertainment, and reasonable, and in the public interest because the proposed amendments retain safety and access-related standards while increasing business expansion opportunities and services for the public.
Okay. And that motion includes all of the amendments on, as proposed on page 28, page 31, and page 33 of our agenda packet.
Which would add 7.43.8 and dot 9.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconds all around. Terry, we'll give it to you. David, we'll give it to you, yes. We'll give it to David.
I'll give it to both of them.
Here's the time.
Okay. All right, got a motion and a second, all in favor? And all opposed?
Mr. Wonderful.
Hey. That's good. Yeah, and, and Matt, however, you might be able to, perhaps in, in your memo to council, you know, much of this recommendation is premised on making the needed changes to the itinerary merchant and making sure that we can distinguish between the two, and that a food truck is indeed treated as a food truck.
Great.
Okay, all right. And last, but certainly not least, our new business item is bringing forward additional text amendments from our UDO audit.
Matt?
All right, I think I have three whole slides for you for this one, so everybody brace yourselves. This is item 2.1, proposed text amendment to the, based on the UDO audit recommendations. Very simple background, you all know, as a part of your review of the COGS recommendations for the audit of the UDO, you've been advancing, strike through and simple modifications to the ordinance as that process is ongoing. This is the second draft of those changes that have been compiled for your consideration. This is essentially sections of the ordinance that are out of date, inconsistent with state statutes, otherwise located in the ordinance somewhere else, and we've proposed to strike through a revision of those changes that the board has identified. I won't belabor the point, we've had plenty of discussion about this, but if you have any questions or anything, I believe Madam Chair had a couple of things that she wanted to tweak, she mentioned before the meeting. Certainly, this is the draft, this board can, can change that draft in their recommendation.
Thank you, Matt. One thing I would like to say, first of all, because there was some concern about, you know, sending, starting to send these things forward versus wait until the bitter end, and my sense of the first round of edits that we forwarded to council, that was well received, and, and, well, they had a couple of questions about it, I think that went through relatively smoothly, and, and they appreciated that, and Matt did warn them that the, those types of things would get larger as we went along, so, so I certainly didn't sense any pushback from council, and they seem to appreciate the fact that we are at long last engaged in this process. So with that said, in general, the one thing, the only thing that I saw, I make copia notes, and right after the audits, I put all this thing, all this in Word doc and send that to Matt, say, and look at the minutes, and when we get those, and try to check and double check to make sure we caught everything, and Matt has done a masterful job of, of doing just that. The only thing that I saw in this round, and it was a lot compared to the first time, in, under planning board, and this would be, would go either at the bottom of page 38 or at the top of page 39, the, in 3.3.3.1, the sentence, and Terry, I believe you pointed this out, the sentence in the UDO says, "Members shall not be appointed more than two consecutive full years, nor serve more than eight consecutive years." And we recognize that instead of years, that should be stricken, and it should be terms of three years each. And so that was the, so it should read, "Members shall not be appointed to more than two consecutive full terms of three years each, nor serve for more than eight consecutive years." And I think the eight consecutive years piece came in, if there was somebody who was appointed to a two-year, to fill out a two-year term, and then they could still be appointed to full terms, or even on the backside, if somebody had served two full terms, and there was a vacancy, and council chose to fill the vacancy with that person with one or two years, that they would still be allowed to do that, because we've come up with some situations like that before in the past. So that was the thing that was left out, to put back in, and then, let's see, on page 44 in our agenda packet, right in the middle, Matt, in 4.5.2, it looks like he struck out or zoning permit, and it seemed to me like wherever a special use, the permit word should still be there.
Hmm, good point, yes, thank you.
Okay. So that's just a...
Mm-hmm.
And then, at the bottom of page 45, and I apologize for this, the very last sentence, it's got conditional use permit, that's from the old language. It should be special use permit.
Correct.
Yeah.
Should, good catch, thank you.
One of these days, we'll get all that conditional and special stuff going all in the right direction.
Can you do that number again?
I'm sorry, um...
I can read it if you need it.
4.9.3.6.1. And that's at the bottom of page 45.
Yep.
So that word conditional should be special. And then, on page 49, this is the last one, the next to the last paragraph in what would be section 5.3.9. So that sentence reads, "For minor site plans and minor subdivision final plats, we struck the as-built survey and as-built construction drawing," or, but then we've got drawings plural, so it was just a, you know, do we have more than one construction drawing? Are we using the and, because we had the and for the plural.
I would ask my requisite grammar person, Ms. Lisa Stites...
Yeah, so I'm getting ready to ask Lisa, what, what should that be?
I would remove an.
There we go.
And then keep the plural.
Makes sense, because you might need more than one drawing.
Might be more than one.
That's correct.
Just remove, so, so it would just read, "For minor site plans and minor subdivision final plats, as-built construction drawing shall be."
That's right.
And so we move the a in at the beginning.
That works.
Okay. And that's all I had.
Great.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for reading every single word.
I can't help myself. And I may still miss something, this was 11 o'clock last night, but I am still drinking coffee.
To your point, as we talked about, I, I specifically remember looking at that terms versus years, thought I had put it in here, and I obviously did not, so thank you for catching that.
Well, if everybody's good with everything else, and since we have gone over the reasons why and wherefore, and Matt did do a good job of, in his, I don't know if y'all saw the agenda packet memo to council of explaining to them what we already know, and, and answering their questions and explanations during the public hearing as well. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve, as amended, I guess, let's see, recognition motion to initiate text amendment as amended.
There you go.
And so forth and so on.
And adopt the consistency statement.
And adopt the consistency statement, yeah.
So moved.
Yes. Second. Terry, I'll give you this one, I think I gave David the last one.
Yeah.
All in favor? That is unanimous, okay. That's a wrap on the business items. Thank you all very much. Board member reports. Bob?
Nothing today, thank you.
Terry?
I don't have anything today.
Terry?
We're good.
David? I just want to thank everything, everybody, for, on the board, for your participation and willingness to express your ideas and discuss things in a civil manner. I want to thank Matt for his professional expertise and being able to avail ourselves of that, and thanks to Lisa for writing it all down and being our editor in chief.
Madam Chair, do we have a, a date for December regular meeting?
The, well, our, now, our next meeting is, our audit meeting is the 7th. That's that Wednesday, and then, what's the third?
It's the 22nd would be the third Thursday.
Should we think about moving that up? Hang on, glad you brought that up, I had thought about...
No, we'll be here.
It's working.
So the, no, the 15th is the third.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, because the first, yeah, so we're, we're in that week anyway.
The 15th, that's right.
Yeah. Phew, okay. Yeah, because certainly that doesn't always happen, it falls in that week of Christmas, kind of close to Christmas, and we either don't have a meeting, or, or pull it back a while. But yeah, so, so audit meeting will be on the 7th, our next regular meeting will be on the 15th.
Yes, thank you.
And so staff reports?
None, no, nothing for me to report.
You covered everything?
No coffee, no staff report.
Yeah, that's right. A little bit more caffeine to get worked up for a staff report.
Yeah, I know the, the only time I tried to do without caffeine, and I was more of a tea drinker at the time than I was that, and it's like, the whole world was in this, I was in this bubble, and the whole world was out there, and it was awful, and anyway.
I'm in the bubble, I'll put it that way.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Terry? Second?
Second.
David? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thanks again, guys.
Thank you.